Record to cloud, right?
Yeah.
Why did we shrink out? And why isn't it saying recording in progress? What is going on here? I am not good at the Zoom thing. Oh. Look at that.
Beautiful.
I can't figure it out.
Okay.
It supposedly is recording.
There's no audio. So...
There's no audio?
It didn't say recording in progress.
It says over there, recording. So test your au- test your audio. Do like, go to the volume, go right over there where you were. Click on that. Move the, uh... Just click on the blue line, on the bottom bl- blue line.
This one?
Yeah. Okay, we got audio. Then I don't know what to say. Nobody's there, anyway. But if somebody comes in, we just ask them if they can hear us.
Travis, can you guys hear us via Zoom?
No. Oh, yeah, they're there.
They're on it, so...
Yeah.
Wave the camera.
Travis, can you hear us in Zoom?
Maybe he only has these mics on. And just, you know... Recording that one. I think it's okay.
Certainly.
Hey. Okay, it's recording, let's get started. Travis, it says, can he use Zoom?
Can't?
No. Hmm. So go to...
The mic.
Test the mic.
It's picking up the mic.
It's picking up. And you have it on the old.
It's on the owl.
I think it'll be fine.
Well, no, if you can't hear me...
Can't hear you on Zoom. That's why we need a dedicated computer here.
Yeah.
We all need to be trying how to do it.
Automatically adjust volume, maybe?
Yeah.
I click that.
What's the easiest way to get into the Zoom link?
What is the easiest way?
So it says, my microphone is in use by Zoom.
Yeah, it looks good over there. On the website.
Go to, um... Board of Selectmen. And the link's down at the bottom of that page.
Boards. Come on, move. Okay, Board of Selectmen. And then?
There should be the link right in the middle of the page.
But it doesn't let me do that. So, um, and Board of Selectmen.
No, you're in the main page now, at Board of Selectmen, right there. That's weird. How come it's not showing our Board of Selectmen page?
I just joined.
Okay, that's what I was trying to do. Can you?
I'm waiting to get, uh...
Oh, we didn't hear that either. That's not the link, you're not there. Oh, yeah, you're there.
Am I there?
They didn't hear you pop up?
It, yeah, I didn't either.
Can you hear us?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Can you hear us in the Zoom?
Test one, two, three.
You can mute it.
No, I can't hear you.
You can't hear us?
No.
It says the mic.
Testy mic? What happens when you click testy mic?
Test the mic?
Yeah, but on the echo.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Last time you were using them.
I just left a meeting.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
There you go. I just left a meeting. Can you hear me?
Okay.
It should be working now.
No, that was the test, right?
That was the test. But can you hear us now on... On Zoom?
I, I left the meeting, uh...
Travis, can you hear us on Zoom now?
No. He said no.
How can he not hear us? We just did the test on the mic. Jim, can you hear us?
No, nothing.
Going to login on a different device, it says. Let me in. After you do this.
Recording in progress.
If I say something? There's no echo. There's nothing.
See the mic? Let me take that off.
And you can, you can hear me.
Zoom background noise removal.
You can hear me.
Let me take it off of that. Can you hear me now?
Nothing. Why don't you, um... Close it down, shut everything down, and start over? Is that too much?
Me?
Not your computer, just the Zoom meeting.
No, but let me... Try with the owl again.
Okay.
See if it picks up.
Maybe shut off the owl and turn it back on?
The video is on. Now it's just my video.
I'm gonna check the owl here.
Turn it back on. Back on now.
Device update available. Tap to begin here, I don't think that will be it. If I do it, it's gonna take another seven or eight minutes.
Yeah. I'm not picking up the video.
Turn on the camera.
Choose that, there you go. Choose the owl.
Yeah, you're choosing, click on the icon. It says a red line. At the bottom left. Yeah, right there, yeah, good. But we, we still don't hear us. It will, it will be coming from my phone, I'm in.
See, Rich can't take days off no more.
Join with computer audio.
Yeah, click to that Google one, yeah.
Recording in progress.
Oh, wait. Hello? Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. Goodbye before it goes crazy.
Come here.
All right. So we're good, right?
We're good.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Selectmen meeting on October 10, 2024. For the meeting at 6:00 PM, we're starting at 6:10. We had some Zoom difficulties. And just to everybody know that... This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel WCAT, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone is in the audience is recording, please let us know. Also, when you speak, tell us your name, and if you live in town, or you represent a board or any other organization. To get us started, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we have our first item, we have a discussion and possible vote on a request from the Board of Health to increase the amount of petty cash anticipated vote. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is just a, a, a simple request from the Admin Assistant for the Board of Health. The current amount is fifty dollars, they're looking to increase it to another fifty for a total amount of a hundred to cover certified mail, uh, uh... Registered mail, any special overnight shipping that, that may be required for them to, uh... To send out to either a butters or, uh, residents in town.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that. Do you have anything?
No, postage is expensive, so...
That's fine, are all the boards about the same?
About the same, yep. Yep, some are a little bit more than others because based on, you know, they have some, uh, needs in terms of mailings and different things like this. This is not out of the ordinary.
That's fine, I just wanted to make that clear. Yeah, sure, so let's make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase of fifty dollars for the Board of Health petty cash.
I second that, all in favor.
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. This...
Yeah.
We have a discussion and possible vote on a request from the Planning Department to change the custodian of petty cash anticipated vote. Is this the Planning Board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This evening is before you is a request, a request from the Planning Department. They have a petty cash account. Um, the custodian, as you know, was Sarah before, but now we have a new custodian, is Laura Sheris, so she will be responsible for the petty cash account. This is not an increase. The, the, the current custodian, um, uh... Or the previous custodian had, had left. This is a new custodian taking over the responsibilities. Again, this is all going o- over our, um, our, our petty cash policy. When, when changes like this, whether it be monetary or custodial changes, they all come in front of the Board of Selectmen for approval.
Yeah, I, I don't...
I'm good.
I don't see anything, I just... Um, suggest or ask naively, said Planning Board Department? Because Planning for me, Planning Department is like a, a special department who are planning for... For future things. Just... Okay, so we have motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the change of custodian to Laura Sheris on the Planning Board petty cash.
I second that, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Number three, discussion and possible vote on a request from a conserv- From the Conservation Commission to establish a petty cash account anticipated vote. Same situation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so for this request, uh, the Conservation, uh, agent is requesting a petty cash in the amount of fifty dollars. That department currently does not have petty cash. They do as well, uh, mailings that are needed for hearings that they conduct, whether notifying butters or, or, or residents in town. Uh, again, they send out certified mail. They are requesting fifty dollars for their department. And Corinne Thibodeau would be the custodian.
Okay. I'm good with it.
Yep.
Have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the Conservation Commission request to establish petty cash in the amount of fifty dollars.
I second that, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Number four, discussion and possible vote to authorize the treasurer to sign the renewal of MEA Health Benefit Trust Medex 2 for the renewal period of 1/1/2025 to 12/31/2025 anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, uh, right around this time every year, the board will be getting a, um, a, a request from the treasurer for our Medex 2 supplemental insurance that is, uh, is given to all our town's retirees for their, uh, um, prescription medicine. And the increase this year, as compared to last year, is quite substantial. It's a little bit over twenty percent. And so with the rising costs of, of prescription drugs, with the costs of people living longer, with new drugs that are on the market that are quite expensive, you know, that, that is reflecting a, uh, an increase from MIA, from what we are being told. And so MIA is passing down that increase down to us. Uh, it, it looks as though that we will, um, you know, that we'll be okay in terms of, of sustaining this in the long, long term. But, uh, for the short term, we will need a small, um... Transfer of money, um, at the special town meeting to cover this unanticipated additional cost.
Well, twenty percent's a lot.
Yeah. Did Medicare go down on their reimbursement? Because one of the reasons why is because of higher prescription drug costs, higher utilization, and changes to Medicare reimbursements.
Yeah, so, uh, I think the federal government changed their reimbursement formula as well.
So they're paying less?
Right.
And the costs are going up?
Yeah, they, they're passing it down to us. So the renewal rates for Medex, uh, for an individual, for fiscal year twenty five, or for calendar year twenty five, I should say. The current rate for an individual is two hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. The, the new rate will be two seventy-two sixty-nine, which will be a little bit over seventeen percent increase. For Blue Medex RX, um, that is, uh, current rate is a hundred and eighty dollars and forty-five cents. The new rate will be a hundred twenty-three dollars and eight cents. About a little over twenty-three percent increase for the Blue Medex RX.
We, we have to pay for it, so...
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we had any other choice?
No, we don't.
Okay.
I mean, at, you know, next year, uh, you know, if, if we continue to see that, you know, rates are, are going, continuing to climb, um, you know, the, the town may wanna look at, you know, other options, uh, other than MIA. At this time, you know, I, I, I don't, we don't have enough time to, to do that. So, uh, these rates will have to go into effect, uh, January 1. Our renewal period, uh, is coming up, so, um, we have to get these rates locked in for this time. There were several years that had, um, either a zero percent increase or a one percent increase or a two percent increase. So if you look at the averages, you know, um, you know, it, it may not be all twenty percent of an increase.
One or two percent's understandable.
Right.
Twenty percent...
Right.
Is ridiculous.
Yeah. Yeah.
You ready for a motion?
I am ready, sir.
Okay. Make a motion to authorize the treasurer to sign in, in the renewal of the MIA Health Benefits Trust Medex 2 for the renewal period of January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2025.
I second that, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Number five, review and possible vote to sign the November 5, 2024 state election warrant anticipated vote.
The, uh, 2024 state election and federal election warrant, who have offices for state offices and federal offices as well as, uh, state ballot questions. Both polling locations are here at the Shepherd Building. And polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on November 5.
There is early voting. Which is posted on the website.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to sign the state election warrant, November 5, for November 5, 2024.
I second that, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Police chief.
Good evening, during what?
Hello.
I'm here for the month of September. In the month of September, the Warren Police Department logged a total of thirteen hundred and seventy-two calls of service, investigated three felonies, had fifty-nine incident reports, had five on-view arrests, one warrant arrest, thirty-one summon arrests for a total of thirty-seven, two juvenile arrests, a hundred and eighty-five motor vehicle stops, and seventy-four citations. In September, that was the start of school, on September 3rd. I spent most of my time that day in the schools. I would ask all the public, keep an eye out for those flashing red lights. Uh, we did have a few instances in the first week of people passing the buses. Please keep an eye out for them. On the 4th, the department had all our radar units in the tuning forks checked and certified for the yearly certification. On the 6th, I met with bus company owner John Leesak and spoke to him regarding any issues they were having with people going around the bus lights. Leesak's actually created a form for their drivers to fill out if that does happen, so they can give it to the PD so we can track it. Uh, on the 10th, I attended my quarterly domestic violence task force meeting at the Ware Police Department. This is grant-funded task force that's made up of Warren Ware and Hardwick and Brain Cheek. Uh, and we meet every quarter with them to go over any issues there are. On the 11th, I attended the Central Mass Chiefs Police Meeting. We had presentations by the Worcester House, uh, Worcester House, the Worcester District's Attorney Office, Joe Early, and a new company by Blue Voice. Um, Blue Voice is an AI platform that provides law enforcement officers with the need access to accurate legal policy and community resources. It's actually pretty cool. You just talk into it, so if you wanted to have, um... Say you have a question about the elements of burglary, you just talk into the app and it pops it right up, all the elements that you need for, for the crime. It's actually a very, very good app.
Is it for Mass only, or is it also for all states?
It sounds like they're branching out. It, it's two gentlemen that were at, don't quote me on this, I believe they went to Harvard. So they started here in Mass, um, and they're trying to branch out throughout the country. So the app, if, if I were to get it, I could put all policies in there. So the guys on, on, if they're out in the street, they can just go to the app and look up any policies or procedures. And, um, Mass Law goes through all, all legal, all, all legal, um, like hand-to-hand and MPI and, uh, Mass General Law, and it, it, you just talk into it and it automatically searches the stuff you're looking for. It's pretty cool.
It doesn't change them, it just searches them?
It searches them, yeah. And, um, yeah, it was, it was a very good app. I'm on the fence of doing it, just all about pricing. See what, see what it comes back at.
You mean it's not free?
No, I wish. You put police on something and the price goes up. On the 17th, 18th, and 19th, I attended the yearly Chiefs in-service in Norwood. The training was attended by more than three hundred chiefs from around the state, and we were able to preview all the classes that the officers will be attending this coming in-service year. Uh, on the 24th, the Warren Police Department was awarded a thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-dollar grant from the Municipal Road Safety Program. So this grant helps us, it, it allows me to put an extra guy on the road for, um, traffic. It could be clicker ticket or aggressive driving, it's what the state issues out that month. And there's four months in the year that we can put these extra patrols out. And finally, on the 25th, all the employees met with a representative calling center to start the wage strike. And that's it for the month of September.
Awesome, very good. I have two comments on the buses. Also, on the driver's side of the buses, I've seen them like just turning without putting a turn signal. I don't know, it's meaningful, but it's still there. You know, I'm just trying to make it even, so we're good on not passing them, but they're good on telling us what to do.
Yep.
Uh, and also I noticed that the big buses drive with the high beams on. And I don't, I don't think there's a need for that. Or they just aim the lights up or something, but they are very strong.
Are they high beams, or are they just newer buses? Because the new, newer buses are all LEDs. And the LEDs are much brighter.
Yeah, but you don't want, you know...
I don't think they can control that, though.
Oh, yeah, inspections. That's what they measure with it.
If, they do get inspected, so that means they're... And they are higher than the normal...
Just say, they, it just, they look so bright, you know, up in the, in the, uh, instead of, you know, the normal other cars. Thank you, chief.
You got it.
Awesome job, chief. Great job on getting the grant.
Yeah, that helps us a lot, especially when the two guys or two or one guy, depending on if they're on duty, and that gives an extra guy out there to strictly do traffic. So it'll help us out.
We've been hearing a lot of good comments about your officers, too.
Nah, we got a great group right now.
Yeah, they, people are very happy and, um, apparently they've been out helping people and, you know, doing a really good job with it. And people are very happy with them.
Yeah, they really do have a great group, I'm happy about that, so...
Yeah, we feel safe. We feel safe.
Thank you, absolutely.
It's not like those fire guys.
Oh, no, those fire guys, really.
Number seven. Possible vote for the town to enter into a contract with Beckham Road Corporation for a fiscal year 2025 road construction materials and to authorize the chair of the board... the chair of the board to sign on behalf of the town, anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These agreements are two agreements that were, are being offered tonight. These two individuals, first one, Peckham Road Corp., and the second one, Murray Park Paving and Reclamation, are both winners of the FY twenty-five highway road materials and hired equipment bid that I had put out a few weeks ago, last month, actually. And now we have got contracts for them. Highway surveyor Jeremy Olson would like to get these executed, these two contracts executed right now, as quickly as possible, so that he can continue to work on Quayhill Road, and some of the other areas of town with the Chapter Ninety funds, as well as some grant money that he's using up from ARPA. This has been reviewed by Town Council, you'll note their signature, has also been certified by the accountant for the availability of funds, and both are in line.
Very good, I think it's all good. Now, the Murray, it's number eight, right, so we're doing?
Yep, separately, yep.
Okay, gonna do the motion, please?
So I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Peckham Road Corporation, and authorize the chair of the board to sign.
I second that, all in favor.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Since we got the explanation, we're gonna do the motion for number eight, too?
Yep, same thing. And I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Murray Paving and Reclamation Inc., and authorize the chair of the board to sign.
I second that, all in favor.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. We have a discussion on setting Halloween hours for October thirty-first. Okay, same last year, chief, right?
Same as last year, right?
Yes.
Five to six-thirty?
Yes.
And then the parade will start in West Warren at six-thirty?
Yes, sir.
So it starts at five, ends up at six-thirty, and the parade, it starts after that. Then we have, we end up at the Station B, and we have our classic, you know, custom parade over there, and with candies and everything. Okay, I think it's good.
I'm entering the custom contest this year.
You're gonna go in?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I'm gonna dress as Rich.
Okay.
You're gonna shave your head?
I don't know if I'm that committed.
Just put a pantyhose over it.
I got a shirt like him on tonight, and I'm sitting in his seat, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's official, we start at five, and all the way to six-thirty, when the parade starts in West Warren.
Yep, sounds good.
Perfect. Number nine, warranted bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. PR fourteen, the amount of sixty-two thousand one hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents. AP fourteen, in the amount of hundred and five dollars and five cents. AP fifteen, in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I second that, all in favor.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Motion for the bills, please?
I'll make a motion to pay the following bills. Turley Publication, in the amount of seventy dollars and eleven cents. HR Direct, for five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Verizon, for a total amount of...
I didn't add those up right, sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's only one of them. So, let's do the calculation for that real quick.
Nine hundred and sixty-six eighty-eight.
Nine hundred and sixty-six eighty-eight.
For a total of nine hundred and sixty-six eighty-eight, for Verizon, and WB Mason, in the amount of three hundred dollars. Modern Pest, for two thousand forty dollars. Warren Electric, for one thousand dollars. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, for fifteen thousand dollars. American Tower, for two thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
I second that, all in favor.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. We don't have any minutes today, and next, we have town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a brief report to give to the board this week. Just today, this will be announced later on, and placed on an upcoming agenda for your guys' official acceptance, but today, we were, I just received word from the Executive Office of Economic Development, and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, the town is the recipient of two grants that we went after this summer, for, under the Community One-Stop for Growth Grant cycle this year, for fiscal year twenty-five. So the town was awarded ninety-six thousand dollars for Pulaski Street, for fiscal year twenty-five, and that's going to be taking care of all of the engineering costs for sewers, sidewalk, roads, utilities, in trying to get a project ready to attack on Pulaski Street with, you know, upgrades into that neighborhood. That was looked at, we applied for it with our Community One-Stop Grant Opportunity, we were successful in getting the ninety-six thousand dollars. That ninety-six thousand dollars does come with a match, the town has, will have to contribute a ten thousand dollar match. So because we were just awarded this, we will be having an article going on, so that we can bump up our matching grant line to accommodate for this new grant. But it makes a hundred percent sense, sense to take the grant for ninety-six thousand dollars, and the town will just kick in ten thousand. So we'll be able to get all of the engineering work paid for, for that project down there. The next grant that we were notified that we were a recipient of is a community planning grant. We had submitted back in the spring for another One-Stop for Growth Grant, for a re, a re, a relook at our zoning bylaws, and to update our zoning bylaws, and a fresh update. So we were awarded forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars from the state. That will allow us to hire a consultant to come in and do a full, a complete analysis, and relook at our zoning bylaws. That grant also does require a match, that match is fifty-five hundred dollars. Again, it's well worth the town getting almost fifty thousand dollars, and putting up, you know, fifty-five hundred. So we will be having two articles on, to ramp up our matching grant funds. We didn't put them on at the annual, because we didn't know if we were gonna get awarded these grants. Now that we are awarded these grants, we're gonna adjust and put that, put money in, into the selectmen matching grant funds, to compensate for those. So those are two great things, those will be coming before the board, I just wanted to, you know, let that out there for the board, just so that they know, you know, what has been happening with that. Today, I had an opportunity to go out to Lowell, University of Lowell, Mass, UMass Lowell campus, and we worked with the Cyber Resilience Program, and EOPS for the state. We had people from the state police, local police, FBI, all come together to talk about cybersecurity and cyber resiliency. You know, this is a huge topic for many communities that are facing these, these types of situations and threats. We looked at how to craft an incident response plan, we've got drafts now of incidents response plans, that I will be sharing with our public safety officials, Jerry and Adam, and myself. We're gonna all come together and put this, put this down into paper for an incident response plan, so that the town has it ready, ready to go. Again, we had applied for a grant for cyber, to update our aging infrastructure, some of the representatives from that grant were at the, at the meeting today, and they're still reviewing our cybersecurity application, and we're hopeful that we'll have an answer on that within the next month or two. But the town did get credit for participating in today's program, we also earned Maya Rewards points for participating, and it's just amazing, some of the stories that we heard today from communities, big and small, that have cybersecurity issues. Just the city of Lowell had an incident last, in twenty twenty-three, that they're still trying to recover from. They had to pay out four point five million dollars in money, to get either their data back, to do upgrades to their system, but that's what that incident cost them. So, I mean, you know, they're, they're a big community, they're the fifth largest city in the Commonwealth, you know, there's other rural communities, and smaller communities that also had to pay, that had incidents and had, had issues. You know, there was a small community that had to pay, you know, a quarter of a million dollars to get their data, and to get their information back. So it's critically important that we stay vigilant, and that we stay on top of cybersecurity, and we make it top-of-mind awareness for all our employees, and I'm gonna continue to preach it, and to talk about it at all our department meetings, and to remind people it's important. Just this past week, you know, people got barraged with being locked out of their computers, because now we, every thirty, every thirty days, we change passwords, we change passwords, you know, so those things that we're on a cycle of changing that, and making sure that people, you know, change their passwords, and do it, some may be even more frequent than just thirty days. So, you know, it's, these, all these, all these programs are out there to help and to secure, and to protect our infrastructure. So we're, we're working on that. This week, I also had a department head meeting on Tuesday, we had Maya in here, a risk management was in here, representatives from Maya, talking to all our departments on the importance of documenting any workplace incidents, workplace injuries, getting those reported, any damage to properties, getting those documented, getting those reported, rewards, credits that are vital. So if there's, you know, there's, there's multiple trainings that are web-based, trainings that any department can participate in, that the town will actually get credit for, if there's participation on. So every time somebody sits down in front of a computer for an hour to take a training, you're gonna get a credit, a dollar of credit, off of your liability insurance. Those are important things, that as liability insurance continues to climb, as costs continue to get higher, if we have more participation, we're gonna get more credits for that. So we went over how to identify, where to, where to go find the trainings, how to get the trainings, what you need to do to get the credits, that was very important. Tuesday night, I had a meeting up at Quaybog with the superintendent of schools, Steve Duff, I went up there, we, you know, there was a group that was put together by all rural communities, small-town, regional school districts, that are dealing with funding challenges and funding problems, and so we all joined on a Zoom call up there for a couple hours, and we sat down, and we just tried to talk about strategies and ways in which we can, you know, look to help each other, in ways in which we can, you know, petition the state to get us more help for small regional school districts. And it was a good conversation, we're gonna continue that conversation for the next couple months, going into fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. Articles are due back tomorrow, by noon, to me, for all the departments. I'm anticipating, there's gonna be a few articles, I'm not anticipating a ton of articles, but the articles are due back to me by tomorrow at noon. We will get them over to the FinCom, and we'll get them to the Board of Selectmen shortly thereafter, the FinCom has done their review. We are also moving towards a biweekly payroll, so biweekly payroll, this, this pay period, the tenth, was the last weekly paycheck. So biweekly will start on the twenty-fourth, so everybody will be getting biweekly, starting on the twenty-fourth, this was the last weekly pay, pay period. And we sent out two notices, and we have also done reminders at department meetings as well in between, to remind staff of all of that. Next week, on the seventeenth, we have Italian Heritage Day down at the Senior Center, we're gonna be having chicken parmigiana, cooked by Paul Fitz, our new chef down at the Senior Center, I'll be bringing in some cannolis, and we hope that everybody has a fun time and enjoy it down there. We are working next week, we have FinCom on Tuesday afternoon at three, we'll start looking at those Warren articles for the special, and we're also going to be looking at Culver, myself and Jeremy, we're gonna be sitting down and looking at the Culver Grant that was recently awarded next week. At two o'clock, we have a meeting with the state, myself and Jeremy, we're gonna be zooming in and meeting with the state on Culver's stuff, so. Busy next couple weeks, we're making progress on a lot of stuff, we've got a lot of new grants coming in, and new stuff going out for different grants that we're working on, so, but everything's moving pretty good right now.
Awesome, very good.
Great job, yeah, love to see the new grants coming in.
Yeah, there's, there's no meeting where we don't talk about grants. It's like, we don't talk about Mario.
He's got, he's got a few.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I really like the ones that we match, because, you know, where we have a little match portion of it.
I'd rather have them a hundred percent, but.
Yes, but haven't you noticed that when it's all free, like, people tend not to care much, but if we pay a little bit, you know, we, kinda like, oh, we pay for that, so we could get it, we better get going or work on it. That's a feeling I have.
Yeah, you're invested in it.
Yeah, it's a little, you know, we're buying a, you know, a half a million dollar airplane for, you know, ten grand. You know, oh, we gotta make a garage, we gotta do this, we gotta take care of it. So I think it's, it's a good thing, too. Very good, new business. Old business.
I forgot to put in the point, I did send out for the dog, Harry, I sent it to them, and then I also sent it out to East Street.
Okay. Very good.
Sounds good.
Yesterday, there was a meeting at the high school for the regionalization, it was the last meeting, after four years of talking about it, two years of meetings, they finally, you know, voted.
And now it's out of the hands of the committee, it goes out to the school committee, and they have to vote for it. If it passes the school committee, it will go out for the towns to vote for it. That's as much as I know. As for my old business update?
I would still like to hear what those benefits would be for us to regionalize with another town, because if it doesn't benefit us, it's not a good deal.
I can't, I can't speak for them, you know, for like, like what it is, it's a complex Just let the school committee vote first, and then, if that passes.
I hope they do the right thing.
The people, the, you know, the towns will have to vote, each town, all three towns will have to pass with a third majority, so that's the process. Nothing more than a process, but, you know, it's worth than saying, you did nothing. Nothing more than a process, but you know, it's worth than saying you did nothing.
Yeah, I'm still skeptical about that whole regional agreement in the first place. It's probably something we should revisit here soon because it's definitely not in the favor of towns. It's more in favor of the school committees.
Yeah.
Financially hurts the towns, so.
Yeah, we'll get there too. Any other old business correspondence? Any comments and concerns? On the public? Yes, sir?
Joe Conrad, resident. Well, as you know, Hurricane Milton went through central Florida. Uh, I believe the destructive path was a hundred and seventy-five miles across the center of the state. I was told there were a hundred and twenty-five tornadoes with this storm. The Tampa Race Stadium is now like Fenway because there's no longer a roof. And one of the tornadoes touched down in Fort Myers, which is where the Red Sox do spring training. I was thinking, if Milton Fountain would like to have known that a tornado and a hurricane were named after him. He was a Red Sox fan. And at one game at Fenway, uh, he took a foul ball to the head. And after the game, some of the members of the Red Sox team actually signed that ball. I can't imagine what it'd be worth today. In the early nineteen seventies, I ran against Milton. It's been fifty years, but the one thing he told me, someday this town may need me and keep running for public office. That's all.
Very good joke. We love people who want to volunteer their time and, you know, for the benefit of the town. Thank you.
I'm here. If needed, I will serve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Anybody else in the public? Do we have anybody here besides Cable? Nope.
Mrs. Dusty.
Mrs. Dusty, please.
I have a comment. Um, I sent out an email to everybody in, in the department heads about a gentleman that is a friend of ours that comes from the mountains of North Carolina and has family and friends and is looking for assistance. He's plans on taking a large box truck down there on the twenty-second. Um, there is things that they're looking for, um, mostly warm clothing, socks, personal hygiene kits, stuff like that. So if anybody would like to contribute to it, I have a bin in the Selectmen's Office.
And this is going to?
Families in North Carolina, in the mountains. Where they're still finding people in trees.
Thank you very much for doing all that. Okay, next meeting? It's a little difficult, huh?
October seventeenth at six PM. You guys have a national grid poll hearing and I won't be here, so.
Okay, that's our next meeting. Hey, next week is my turn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that. All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. We are adjourned.